Okay, so we're calling it into order at six.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, right on the dot. And then, we do need an executive session that will probably take 10 or 15 minutes, so we definitely want to end by, I think, 5:45, so that we can move down to the other room and be ready for everybody. No, 6:45. I'm just confused. Okay, so let's look at the agenda. Was there anything else? Any thing to add?
The approval for the non-federal waiver share.
So let's make sure we put that under your administrative reports, the action-related items. And I know the administrative report from you is going to deal with the Act 46 time. The options. Anything else that anybody? All right, so, do we have any more?
No, because we did those last week, so we didn't have any more.
Often we do. Okay, so a motion for the agenda, yes, on, in minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then let's, no visitors. Then let's move on to the, why does it say finances here? We're just, it's normal? Okay. All right, then we'll go down with administration. Let's start with you, Deb, you're on the end.
Okay. I handed all of the board members, Lyle and Frank, a copy of the federal monitoring tool that will be used by the reviewers during the week of their visit here, April 2nd through the 5th. I flagged the program design and management section, which is basically the section that will, the reviewers will be focusing in on that concern governance. Frank, there's a whole section in there on finances, so you can take a look at that and know what they're looking for. They would like to send the lead reviewer to attend our April 4th board meeting, and at that time, that's when the interview would happen. They said it should take about half an hour. Basically, again, the focus will be on looking at systems, especially communication. It's great that we have David, who also sits on policy council, and the information goes back and forth, and they'll want to know, as you'll see by looking at the criteria, how pertinent pieces of information are communicated to you. I would say that I feel fairly confident that everything is in working order. I'm not going to take time to go over the items, but if you have any questions, feel free to call me.
So April 4th, I was just going to look quickly at our work plan. We have down, right on the latest version that I have anyways, continuous improvement plans, SBA data, current budget status. So I think taking a half an hour shouldn't be a problem.
We do have a parent coming that evening to make a request for this.
That shouldn't be too long either. We could probably do the parent, actually, at the beginning.
Okay, so I'll let her know that she'll be on about 5:30?
Nah, probably like 10 minutes in.
Okay.
And what do we call this, federal review?
Federal review. The head start, an early head start, federal review. It's called Focus Area 2. That's the monitoring term. I would like to inform you that, starting on Monday, in our Westminster site, just to refresh your memory, we were running double sessions there because we're low on teaching staff. We have one of the three vacant positions hired, and we have two potential candidates in the hopper. And so we're going to, starting on Monday, continue with double sessions, which is not what I told you in the email yesterday, Jill, but, and run five days a week rather than four to start. And then hopefully, following the April vacation, we will have those other two candidates on board, and we can begin to transition back into a full-day, full-year program model, which will be much appreciated by everyone. And then finally, we had a lot of discussion about non-federal share a few meetings back. I had presented a request for approval for, a waiver request for $50,000 that fell under the mark of what we needed to accomplish, and we actually never had a vote. And we had lots of conversation and discussion about it, and so I'm putting that forward as a request that you vote to approve that submission.
You guys remember this discussion about the in-kind? And we said, yes, we understood it, and it was coming up, but we never actually made a formal motion, and she needs that. She even went back and looked, and we really never did, so.
Okay, I move that we approve the waiver request for $50,000.
Is that mature?
It wasn't.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Looking for the caucus?
This is the school board?
It certainly is, yeah. Just wanted to make sure you weren't looking to join the town meeting.
Welcome.
Actually, we usually do our introductions, so go ahead.
You usually what?
We usually introduce ourselves if we have guests.
So my name is Emily Murphy-Corr.
And you're just a parent here in Brattleboro?
No, I'm not a parent.
A community person from Brattleboro?
I just moved to town, and I was in education policy before, so just.
Oh, so this will be lots of fun.
You're in the right place. We start every meeting with introductions, and if you have something to say, you're welcome to it.
No, just listening.
So, we have name tags, I guess. Pretty much board members up to here, administration and principals were, like, segregated today.
We need to integrate more in the future. We order to change our seating.
Yes, we can do that after town meeting.
All right. Deb, we have, did we actually vote and say all in favor?
Yes, all of our in favor.
There we are. So you have that. Do you have anything else for us?
I do not, thank you.
I've got a couple of things in last policy council. I thought we had hired one new head, early head start, one new head start to cook and a home visitor.
That's correct.
But we still have more vacancies before we can get back to full-time up there. Also, the staff is working on resilience. Not surprising. Working with mindfulness coach, linking health with early trauma, looking for funding, I think, from Vermont.
First.
And we made the first cut. And what am I talking about?
Government's money.
Yeah, okay. And obviously, there are concerns about comparing this, but basically, they're looking at the same things that we do. There's a lot of other stuff, but not tonight.
Those meetings are never boring.
Outdoors, expanding classrooms, family units.
Jerry, passing it on to you.
Yes, good evening. So I passed out my board report last time we met. Couple things to highlight, that we have mad science that have joined our after-school program. It was really apparent on our PTO that did a lot of the legwork to make the connection, had put out surveys to parents of what type of programming they would be interested in for after-school programming, and so is helping to raise some funds, because mad science, they bring in their own scientist, and it's very hands-on. We have 20 students that quickly enrolled in the program, so it's really exciting. It's on Thursdays. So that was, that's really neat. Again, it just started. Harris Hill fundraiser was our PTO. That's like their big fundraiser. I'm sure Mark will talk about his fundraiser coming up, but Harris Hill for us is, gets bigger and better every year. The weather helps out a lot, so this year, I think last year, or anyway, we're usually down in the thousand mark, and this year, I think they hit about $2,000 on the fundraiser, so we're really excited about that. The other thing that I'll just acknowledge is that at All School Sing in the building, we acknowledged World Down Syndrome Day, which is actually today, so we had a lot of songs around being kind and compassionate and walking in other's shoes. I read a story to pre-K up to first grade. It's a cute little children's story. And then there was also a video link that we sent out to some of the other kids, so that they could have, watch the video and then have some classroom discussion. And then the other thing that I don't think I've ever mentioned is, we have three student interns from BUHS. They are seniors. One is going to be working with our student leadership team. Another student has been coming for almost a month now, and he works with four, five, and six, goes outside for recess. I mean, he's really, he's a self-starter. He just comes in, he's just like, you know, "Hi, I'm here," and he's ready to go. And so he'll be outside of recess and hanging out with the kids, and then he does some indoor game over lunch, so it gets them out of the large cafeteria, they kind of connect, and that sort of thing. And then another student just is joining us this week, and I think we're going to try to do a match. It's not a Big Brother thing, because it's an actual program, but it's going to be kind of like, kind of a mentor for one of our kiddos. So those are some of the highlights that are happening.
Are the kids through the Career Center, or are they just volunteering at home?
Lisa, one's through Lisa Johnson's program, and then the other is through, with Dean Casey.
Casey Dean.
Casey Dean, sorry. Yeah. And that was coordinated with, Lisa Johnson coordinates with me. Actually, we have four, I forgot. We have another student who comes about 10:30 and works with Greg Frost, so he helps with facilities management. So, oh, we have four.
Next.
Mark? Sorry, Mark.
Yeah, we also have three student interns who, from high school, started up this week. It's been great to see the collaboration and their excitement to work with younger Couple of things I wanted to highlight from last month's report, is we had, we brought a planetarium to the school as an all-school assembly. It was really terrific. Our gymnasium was basically turned into a big bubble, and all the students came in as grade levels, and they got to visit different planets, constellations, the Milky Way, the Black Hole. It's a really neat experience, and affordable, bringing a planetarium to the school rather than, like, going to one. So it was through mobile ed, and they have lots of programs, so I'd recommend it to other schools. It's a nice experience.
Is that the sort of thing, how long did they spend with you?
The entire day. They did 45-minute sessions.
So would it be the type of thing that maybe next, if you do it again, that maybe they could just kind of cruise on down the road and go from one to another?
Yeah, yeah. The other thing, just wanted to highlight from last week's meeting and the report, you know, we've talked a lot about transience, transient population. We enrolled, we've enrolled six kids over the past month, so.
Six kids over the past month?
Yeah.
And where have they come from?
Two from South Carolina, one from Hensdale, one from Goffstown, New Hampshire, one from Vernon, and one from Utah.
It's just always an amazing list.
And then the two main points I wanted to make tonight has to do with our after-school programming. It's really evolved and taken off. I've talked about this repeatedly. But I have a couple, some statistics I'd like to share. We average around 70% participation throughout the school year. We just filled up our sign-ups for our spring session, and we have 211 slots filled up out of 230 kids in our school. So that's about 92% participation. So we'll basically have a full school day until for 15, three days a week in the spring. So it's really exciting, offering programs like a fishing club, running club, tutoring, jazz band, newscast, mural painting club, a cooking club, fun and games club, makerspace, and poetry. So, we're pretty excited about that.
I just reviewed our board goals, and one of them was to be in the school board. Maybe we could pop in and take a mural painting.
I would to join the fishing club.
Fishing club.
We're always looking for volunteers to teach in our after-school program, so if you have a talent or a passion you could come and, you know, work with the kids.
Yeah. So I think those statistics speak to, you know, student engagement, family engagement, and wanting to be a part of them, and also, you know, staff dedication, because you can't do it without interest from the staff to offer such a variety. And then, as part of our after-school programming, we're offering a school musical once again this year. We did our first musical last year, Lion King. This year's musical is Wizard of Oz, and if you could make one of our shows, that would be great. April 5th and April 6th at 6:00 p.m. Maybe.
That's a Thursday, Friday?
Five and six, yeah. Thursday, Friday. Two six o'clock shows. Kids are really excited. Costumes are starting to come together, so I think we'd love to have you if you can make it.
Limited seating, get tickets early, or?
I would say. It's going to be a full house. Yeah. If you can't make the 5th or 6th, we're doing an in-house show on the 4th at 10:00. It's kind of a dress rehearsal in front of the whole school. So I think the more polished show would be the 5th or the 6th. Those were the two main things I wanted to highlight tonight.
Do you want to do your agenda item that's below at the same time the Canada trip?
Oh, that's right. Forgot about that.
I put it on the agenda, so we couldn't do it again.
Yeah, Alice Sharks is our French teacher. She has contact, has made a relationship with a school in Magog, and she would like to bring, take a field trip for the day, and take our sixth grade to Magog to go out, go out to lunch, visit the school, meet the other students, but basically experience a day of just speaking French and being in Canada. So she has worked out, she's received a grant for $400 to help support the field trip. She's worked out transportation in terms of some vans that we're going to rent, and we have some other staff members who are going to participate as well. It's not a have-to field trip, so it's a field trip that we're offering. We won't say no to anybody, any sixth grader, but you have to be committed to wanting to go on the field trip. To go, to go to it. Right now, we have about 20 kids, I think, that are committed to going.
And you have the required identification to cross over for all of them?
Yeah.
Because it's trickier now?
Yeah, she's done all that, but we're, just for the day. They're going to leave real early.
So you've got sleeper vans.
Yeah. Well, we don't have sleeper vans, but there will be some napkin, I'm sure.
Pillows and blankets.
She's looked into insurance and to what it will need to cross over. She's worked on that documentation. She's done her homework.
That'd be an excellent experience, too.
Gilford School used to go as their class trip.
So yeah, I think it's a really innovative idea. Want to support it, since we're leaving the country, definitely wanted to inform the board.
Good to know.
But that will be taking place in, do you have the date in front of you?
May, I think it is.
Yeah, late May.
Let's hope for no snow.
Right.
Well, it is Canada, so it's a little later.
Okay, Kelly and Andy.
Two words, food and breakfast. With that, I'd like Kelly to go.
All right. Well, really, you have food for breakfast, too, so. I wanted to let the board know that Jody Matulki and I were awarded a grant through Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Vermont as part of their wellness initiative for $750, and that is going to go toward funding part of our Culinary Academy after-school cooking program, which starts next week. We have 16 kids, grades four through six, enrolled in that class, and two of our food services staff are going to be running that. And week by week, it will build on courses, so the first week will be intro to the kitchen, learning how to use all of the equipment. Then it will be focused on healthy snacks with an emphasis on the Veggie Van Go foods, and salads, soups, wraps, bowls, like a quinoa bowl, like burrito bowl, and the last one will be desserts. And then the culminating event will be a double session where the families will be invited to have dinner, and the students will prepare dinner after school and eat with their families. And they'll all get a recipe book to take home and to take notes in as they learn. And some of the, I just wanted to share with you the success and how we'll measure it as we wrote it in the grant. There's evidence stating that when students eat healthy, balanced diets, they're more likely to attend school, so we're looking for better attendance. Higher percentage of families attending Veggie Van Go, which hopefully will be at academy as well as the high school next year, and a higher percentage of students attending our universal meals at school as well. So we're pretty excited about it. I think there was, there were quite a few grants submitted, so we were pretty proud of that accomplishment. Looking forward to watch the class evolve for the first time, so.
And now for breakfast. We're in the middle of our literacy breakfast, and that is where classrooms invite parents and students in in the morning for breakfast, and it's around literature. In the younger grades, kids get a book that the teacher has selected personally for them. Older grades, it can be, students present to the parents and sort of the crowd about a book they've read or some writing. It's a pretty cool experience. That's all paid for through Title I funds. Then today was our family breakfast for grades two and three, where we invited all the students and their parents to come join us. Next, the next two Wednesdays, we'll be doing family breakfast. Next Wednesday is family breakfast for grades four, five, and six. The fall-in Wednesday is kindergarten grade one, which was postponed from last weekend over the school day. So that's the breakfast information. Where all the schools are going through a safety audit, with the, all of the Brattle schools are going through with the Brattle Town PD. Other schools are using the sheriff or the state police. So we're all scheduled for that. We have hours tomorrow with Lieutenant Perkins. So that's also initiative, that came from initiative by the governor. The governor and the agency of education have worked together to ensure that all schools are participating or, you know, in, or have the latest safety measures in the school in terms of lockdowns and intruder alerts and that kind of thing. So we'll be doing that. We're also, and all of us are, you know, doing lockdowns, which is now required by law recourse in Vermont, where the sophistication of our lockdowns and the way we do lockdowns continues to evolve. Unfortunately, it's an evolving, I want to call it science, but it's an evolving situation due to the continuation of this nature of violence in our schools. So we're continuing to try to train staff and students to respond in what we believe to be the safest manner if a situation were to arise. And on Friday and Monday, we have parent-teacher conferences, and we also have the student mentor program. It's really exciting to see the connections with the upper grades, with high school kids coming back to the elementaries. We have four student mentors who are coming. One of the students is a former academy school student. We also, we also have students who, while they're in high school in their senior year, want to be teachers. So every year, we have, from a class, we have one or two students per semester come back and actually spend several hours a week in typically a kindergarten classroom, and that's been real exciting as well. Right now, in the kindergarten classroom, we have a student of ours who came to us directly from India. When she got to us, she spoke no English whatsoever. She was adopted from India, spoke no English. And she's now back a few days a week working in our kindergarten class. So it's really, it's a great thing to see. It's really wonderful to see this, this young woman. Remember when she was, you know, about that big, but this young woman come to us now, and she's considering being a teacher, so it's really sweet, wonderful thing. We also have a musical coming up, Frog and Toad Together, just when you thought they weren't. And that's April 12th, and we'll, we'll give you opportunities to remind you of that date. Thank you.
So the first thing, I'd like to inform the board that it was a unanimous decision on all the focus groups with our academy principal search to recommend Kelly Dias as the principal starting next year at Academy School. Can I have the information? So the board can make that official, that'd be great.
I happily make a motion to support the recommendation from Superintendent Lyle to higher. Any discussion? I just want to make a comment that we, to do this process, I always have been impressed by how complete it is, and I appreciate the opportunity that we had first, Robin, to be as part of a smaller group that did several, the initial look and round one and two, right? And then that the administrators and the staff and the board and the parents all had their focus group. So I really appreciate it, and I think when we're done, I feel very confident, always in my decision.
Especially when everyone came to the same conclusion.
Exactly.
Yes.
So, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All from the board. Could we go from assistant principal? Last time was the official.
Set a new record. Two new jobs in two weeks. I'll stop here.
We hope you stay for a while.
Yes, hope you enjoyed your week as official assistant.
And now that you know how to do that, it's easy to pick your assistant.
I want to make sure that everyone knows that there is a school safety forum at 6:00 Friday at the, yeah, at the high school. Steve Perrin and I will be representing Wyndham Southeast. I believe there is a student, possibly Molly Darling, will also be joining us on that forum. There'll be a student, Bob Tebow, from Leela and Gray, and Bill Anton from Wyndham Central will be joining us, so if you are in the area, able to join us, that'd be great.
What student?
They've asked one student from each of the two areas only, yes. They've done this, they did this maybe last week in Bennington, so they've changed it a little bit, so that it's more of a question-answer. I think last, last time, there were a lot of comments made, and they're hoping to have more of a question-answer type of situation. The other thing is Act 46, Section 9 can be presented to Secretary Holcomb. Right now, Dummerston and Brattleboro are the two to be officially still scheduled. Dummerston has given me dates of April 9 and April 10. I don't know if those work for any of you. It would be great just to cut down on Frank and my transportation. However, other dates are next week, 28th, 29th, and 30th. I will not be able to be there on 29th.
So just remind us, this is to talk with the school boards only, right?
Correct.
That she's going to do?
Yes, and it's a half-hour segment. The half-hour time, I think I sent you sort of an outline of some of the things that you can share. If one, or all of you are invited, if more than two of you go, we'll need to warrant it as a regular meeting. So I would like to get that scheduled before, everybody in the southern part of Vermont has a very few days to choose from.
So I can do February 9, sorry, February, let's not go backwards. April 9 and 10, I could do either of those. Is there anybody else that wishes to go up? You wish to go up?
Yeah.
Robin, did you wish to go up as well?
Uh, no. I don't know, I'd have to check.
When? I'm sorry, let me think about this a little more before I just say no. When did you say it is, what time?
Well, we can choose times according to what's really available when we get back to them, right?
It's always in the afternoon. It's on April 9, it's 2:00 or 3:00. April 10, it's 1:00, 2:00, 3:00.
But it's in Moncrief?
It's in, yeah, it's not Moncrief, but it's very Moncrief.
Very, okay.
I'd have to check work, but whichever day, you know, you just pick a day, and then I think it's.
I'd have to check work, but whichever day, you know, you just pick a day and then I, yeah.
It'll be similar one way or the other would be.
I could, I could more likely go if it was on Monday, but if, if that doesn't work for everyone else, I can find that one.
Did we get questions or just information about? Because a lot of boards have gotten questions related to it.
No, I don't remember, because I figured it was in the future of.
It's probably doing, you can just send.
Yeah, I can resend them.
Yeah, rather than now.
Yeah. And there were specifics, you know, have you considered, did you, when you were thinking about things, did you consider this? Did you consider that, that type of thing? So I'll send it on again.
So do we, do you want to choose the, the date now? We should probably just choose a date, the ninth through the tenth.
Ninth for me, that's better.
And that's on my day.
That's on my day, yep. So the two times open on the ninth were the two o'clock and three o'clock, so.
Let's go for two if we can.
I will put you in at two. Dummerston in at three.
Okay. So.
We might table this again.
We keep it. So there's, we've got like fifteen minutes before we said we needed to stop. I'd like to go the town representative meeting preparation, since that's in the next few minutes. And unless, I've shared with everybody from the administration team the presentation. And then I was hoping that we could each take a slide or two and talk. Do you have a list of what I said, so that I don't have to rethink that? I thought I'd start with saying hello and what, and doing the interview and we do introduction. And then I'm done. And then I would.
Until the questions start.
Yes, right. But for the presentation part. And then I'd kick it over to Lyle and she would look at a couple slides of just some statistics that we've heard. Homeless and foster care that's in all of our schools. And then kick it to you, Kim, and it's affectors affecting student learning. And let me just check with the English folks, I did that right. Affect is a verb.
On slide four, sorry, slide five.
Yeah.
Can we edit around to approximately?
Yes, I'll do that.
I just want to make sure that I'm correct on my verb. Affect and effect, effect is the noun and affect is the verb, right?
Yeah.
Did I do this right?
Yes, it's on student learning.
I don't want to mess that up. All right, so then you would do that one and then Kim, you should be able to click on the video that Kim went over and edited with from VCTV that M has done for us. Thank you again.
Thanks, M.
And then we'd go into, Robin, you have four slides, but there's some student information. It's just a headline.
Okay.
And then it's these charts of what the enrollment is and which families are, the percentage of families experiencing inadequate housing.
So we're going to basically guide people through the information on this slide?
Just explaining what is on the chart.
We've had complaints about reading slides to people while they.
It's a chart. So just pointing that out. Thirteen and fourteen, that would be you, David, so it's on what are we doing? And then you have a full chart on a full experience for everyone. It's a list of all the stuff that's going on. You might want to just talk a little bit about how we're giving a broad view. You know, we just heard about the culinary program and the after-school programs with the ice, well, fishing, with ice fishing and more. So that we're, we're going for all of the students, not just worrying about the bad things that we're talking about.
And that's with the outside of the regular school classrooms.
Right. And then we go to slide fifteen and Mark, I thought of you. And it's supporting staff and trauma-informed professional development book studies, behaviors, working within the classrooms. Sixteen, bullet one, Mark, that would still be you, which is supporting students, social workers at academy in the Green Street. So I thought you'd probably want to address why specifically what you've seen out of the academy and why Green Street, because that's a new thing in the book and the budget.
Yeah.
Jerry, if you could do bullet two, behavioral programs.
Yep.
And, you know, you're kind of covering all the different schools. But nutrition, Andy, since you guys are on food and breakfast today, you're going to continue. Bullet four, Julian.
Julian, yep.
She's okay, it's on diversity. And bullet five, we put on, I put that on afterwards, but special support differentiation in after-school that we do offerings. Lyle, you want that one? Okay. And then we'll go to slide seventeen, which is, does it make a difference? And eighteen is basically, okay, then it, let's see, let's look at what it makes a difference in student performance data, since they're just headlines. So then nineteen, twenty, let's see, so Lyle gets seventeen and eighteen. Paul gets the charts on the Sback, which is nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. And it's just comparing the Sbacks throughout the supervisor union and the state. Twenty-two is Lyle with elementary schools, like what else do we see for results in the parent-teacher, the parent surveys? Looking at that and what we're working on in that. Then we go back to EES, Deb, I was hoping you would present that again on twenty-three and twenty-four, which are the, you know, assisted two-hundred-and-eleven families, referred so many people out, dental care, whatever. And then we come into twenty-five and twenty-six and that would be Shelley. And that's looking at the IAP students as a percentage of the total enrollment. And then a chart that shows outside placements going down. And then we wrap up with, back to me, and I just say, and now over to Frank about money. Well, I guess I could say, good news, we're not raising taxes. And then I'll leave it for, and we'll open it up to questions. And when Kim hits the button that, that's set, I think at thirteen minutes and forty-eight seconds is what it came out to be, although I want to try to hit replay at one-point-two-five speed, which makes Tracy speak a little bit quickly, but not standard. So I think it works and it would go just a slight bit faster for people. Hopefully, the whole presentation would be done by forty-five minutes in or so, hopefully. But it doesn't leave a lot of time for anybody. Do we give Kelly anything to comment? Or whoever you want.
I do the backpacks program, we'll talk about that. So it's a six-thirty.
I think we should push questions till the end so we can kind of keep it going in a logical flow, unless someone's really urgently. Okay, I'll do that, my introduction's coming, so that's what I do. All right.
Great, Jill. Could you just tell me one more time, what was the, the section heading on those charts that you wanted me to? I just forgot what you said, it was the category. This was like a backup when there were seven or eight.
Enrollment.
Enrollment.
They're going to get a blue one that says some student information.
Okay, some student information, that's why I couldn't remember what it was.
And mine is that, mine are after Robin's?
You're right after that.
Yeah. And you'll come in at what are we doing? No, eight.
Yeah. Eight was, I think what you said was some student information.
David, you're, you're coming in at what are we doing? Okay. And integrated field review summary. Do we need more time than?
Let's say. Guess we'll leave that.
I believe this is the most tabled item ever to hit her.
Well, we can wait till the summer.
We actually could.
Because it's about goals and what we're doing.
All right, we're moving that one forward. And follow-up on diversity training, we were mumbling last time about a time and.
Yes, I wrote back to Dottie, but I, this week just got away from me, so I just sent it to her this morning. I could maybe give another date earlier in June, so I'll let you know.
We'll bring that back next time, too. Okay, and then the agenda for next meeting, for confirmation of the next meeting, is where? We didn't put this out this last time, so what, where are we going to be now in April?
Which school?
Which school? Have we not been?
I think we haven't gone to Green Street in a long time.
Okay, so April back to Green Street. And anything for the agenda? What's that?
You have the reviewer, right?
The reviewer's coming for the first half an hour, we have the parent requests.
And I'm going to, I want to make sure that the alternative has time on that agenda as well.
And what does the alternative, what should we put on?
Talk about the additional information we've had since the summer and consider reconsider proving it for support.
Okay, so I'm putting these things out to Barb, I'll try to do it now.
One other thing about the Sback, Jill. I've got a series of articles, I'm going to send references to them around to people that, it's just conversations about the Sback and about assessment. And since we all, I don't know if we all, everybody looked at the open meeting log thing that came around this way, forward to the time manager, but doing that is fine, sending articles and information and materials is not an issue.
And every time we send it, I'm asking Barb to post it up to the website. So if you actually go to the website, it has our meeting agendas, the minutes, and supporting documentation. So anything that's going for that meeting is out there. So whatever you're sending.
I'll make sure she gets that, too.
Make sure we always send it.
And actually, the field review tool.
We should be going live with our new website next week.
Really?
We're still waiting for the state to make sure that we can use whatever it is that we are asking to use for like a domain name or something, you probably know more than I do, but we're very close.
We'll see.
That's great.
We're about to emerge into the two thousands.
Uh-huh, exactly.
I'm just getting used to the other one. And find everything well now. Okay, so then, is there anything else from the administration? So at this point, I'm going to make a motion, we go into executive session, which is because after making a specific finding that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage. So that's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.